Mayor Bauer.
Here.
Mayor Porchamandere.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Willoughby.
Here.
Alderman Green.
Here.
Alderman Purvis.
Here.
Madam Maryam Coram.
Thank you. All right, um, pledge allegiance to the U.S. and Texas flag. I'm going to need to say which I've never done before.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And Ms. Williams, it's Adama Williams, most of y'all know her, she's our Jamaica Beach Police and Chaplain, and she's the leader of the community.
Just a quick interview.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, quick, uh, if you'll join me in these words of intention as I pray. Tonight, we invite the Creator of all things that are great and small to guide us in the works that we do. We give thanks for creating with us this city. We give thanks for the elected officials, for the businesses, for the places of worship and the families. We humbly seek, um, wisdom and confidence during the meeting, and that all present tonight have meaningful discussion, discussions, and may each council member bring with them a measure of knowledge, encouragement, and guidance as they deliberate on items. Let all persons here be led by enthusiastic enthusiasm and open minds, generous hearts, and willing spirits to accomplish the work to be done. For each and every one of these endeavors, we ask grace and favor, and by faith, we all say amen.
Amen. Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Okay, at this point, um, public comments, um, Mr. Dustin and Timothy Smith.
Yes, what's up? What's up? Hi, officer. I'm Justin Smith, it's my dad Timothy.
I'm German.
Sixteen thousand three trillion and a half. Uh, we're a little, we're a little house, double eight fence on track. So, um, um, we came here today because I think that there's different favoritisms that seem to be showing towards different people that are in the neighborhood. Um, my particular issue is my neighbor has built a, uh, eight-foot-tall fence that he's said that it's actually temporary, but you can, you can consider any fence temporary because it still has four by fours go that's, that are attached into the, it completely and unable to remove, but you can remove the fence panels if you want to take, take them off the fence panel. So that would mean that no, all fences are technically temporary if you're just gonna do it that way, because the other ones are permanently attached, the actual four by fours that support it. And, uh, I've got three or four cameras that are down on my bottom area so I can hear and see exactly what's happened. Um, he did actually remove some of the panels the other day, so some of those are down. They're coming, they've bumped it up and down a couple of different times, but it's still a permanent structure because the four by fours are permanent that are on it, that's the only way it can actually be held to the ground is with four by fours. So plus it's heightened, but as a result of having those cameras, I also heard that he had responded to one of y'all that, uh, the mayor had given him permission to keep it there, and he's not gonna take it down. I know that when I, I know that when I had a six-foot-two-inch fence, before we even finished cutting the nice little wave that's on my fence there, we were, we were, we, we got a nice visit by the officer back there, because it was a different time when I was done, so the police officer said he was going to, had the ability to write me a ticket to find if I didn't fix this. I said, look, top of my fence, if anybody's driven by it, is a wave. We have to get it that height so we can actually cut the top of it to be a wave, so that. And then I had another one where the same thing's been, was approved from my neighbor that they could actually put concrete all the way up to the edge of my, uh, edge of my fence. I got approval by the, uh, H O, the, uh, uh, whatever, the landscape, uh, the, the Jamaica Beach ones are.
Can we ask?
Yeah, I got approval to do what I was doing with a, with an actual, uh, deck of wood, but they said, no, you can't do wood, even though my, because that's somehow different and worse off than actual concrete. I would think that concrete was actually something much more permanent than a wood deck, so I had to rechange everything we're doing, wanted to put in enlarged two-foot-by-two-foot concrete blocks, which is not much different than wood, but I think it was another set of favoritism. And a fourth, then a third thing now at this point in time, there is a jet ski ramp that sticks some jets out way past into where you're not supposed to have things out into it. Um, somehow, some, somebody here or in the office or whatnot have, have told them or they've said that it's going to be declared as a temporary structure, even though it hasn't moved over in the past two and a half years ever from its origin, that it's actually attached to the side, put into the ground and attached to the side of the, uh, the dock. So, uh, other than favoritism that I'm seeing happening within the city, which is kind of frustrating in the first place, we've gone through all the things we've done, we've done our permits for our deck, we've done permits for, for when we had to do repairs on things. We did it all the right way, we had inspections, we've had crap where people have given us things about the concrete, about the fence line, we did it all the way we need to do it, but now, but if I'm gonna be looked at, we're gonna be looked at in such a way that they're gonna be coming down on us next, they should be doing it for everybody. And this isn't a pick-and-choose type of a thing, and I just wanna know why something like that's existing, why I heard what I heard, because like I said, I have cameras, why the mayor would have given them permission to keep it, and how she has that type of a scenario of power to do such a thing. So I'm just looking essentially to get that, the jet ski taken care of and the, and the thing coming down. That's it, thank you.
Okay, we have been, um, special presentations today. Um, from an announcements perspective, we're having a hurricane preparedness meeting Saturday, June twenty-second. Uh, we do that annually in conjunction with the West Galvin Island, West Galveston Island Property Owners Association. So, um, it'll be here at our Jamaica Beach Fire Station. So make sure you put that on the calendars, we always have new speakers.
Please do it. Please do it.
I don't think we've worked that detail yet. But we will, we know you have a good one. Uh, okay, next is reports from directors, police and fire. So, um, Kendall?
Yes, Mayor, uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'd like to start off by making an introduction of our newest team member, and she's sitting back there quietly in the crowd. Uh, I'd like to introduce Katie Farmer, uh, she is our new, actually won't even stand up.
I'm a star, I'm a very star.
She's our new, uh, building and S T R clerk, and, uh, we're excited to have her. Um, and, uh, she's already, uh, making a positive difference for us, so, uh, it's, uh, it's been very good. I would like to take the opportunity to say thank you to the rest of our staff. You know, over the course of the last couple of weeks, we've been, uh, two people down in the office, and so, yeah, everyone has pitched in and went above and beyond to be able to, uh, cover the gaps left in the building and, and the short-term rentals, um, as well as, uh, the utility department. And, uh, I'm just blessed to have a, a good team around me, so thank you to them for that. Um, kind of a follow-up to the hurricane preparedness meeting there, um, we held a, um, an evacuation exercise here within City Hall to begin our plan for, um, the hurricane season. And our goal is by that meeting on the twenty-second that we will have, um, some information to be given out to the, um, to the citizens about our process for allowing people to return if we were, if we have to evacuate. Uh, we know people who wanna, who want to be able to get back into the city and, uh, toughen their properties, um, and maybe them personally, or maybe contractors or whoever else, um, so we're trying to put together what that process could look like so that we can, uh, let people back in safely, um, and, and organize. So there's, there'll be more information to come about that. I would also encourage everyone to sign up for our Blackboard Messaging, um, Platform. It is kind of our, um, it is our premier platform for, um, emergency communication. So if you go on the, the city website, and there is a form on there that you can fill out and we'll send it in, uh, we will get you added so you can receive emails, texts, or a, or a voice call about, uh, the emergency's preparedness. Um, and unfortunately, they are predicting an active hurricane season, so, uh, we definitely wanna be ready. Um, I would like to let everyone know that we are finalizing a plan for removing the dumpsters from the beach. Uh, Robert and I will be talking tomorrow, um, about a couple of bits we've received for, uh, some alternative dumpsters that we will be utilizing. And, uh, I know I've heard a lot of citizen comment about, um, the, how they don't, they're not very attractive, and honestly, they're not very beneficial to us because they get filled up with a lot of things that are not Jamaica Beach-related, unfortunately. So, uh, we will, we will be seeing a change there pretty soon. Uh, we also, today we received, um, notification from G L O that the beach nourishment, that the, we have the hundred percent design and specifications for that plan. They're sending it to their procurement, um, portion of the G L O, and they told us to expect about six months from advertisement to notice to proceed. So we're, that puts us in about the October timeframe, where we will start, uh, um, probably start seeing people mobilize to do that, uh, to do that work.
Kendall, to confirm, the budget estimate is still around a hundred and forty-two thousand for our portion, right?
Uh, I don't have those numbers in front of me, our budget portion has not changed, although the total scope of the project, the total cost of the project has increased.
Yeah.
Um, but they are looking to, to get that difference from FEMA and the state.
Okay.
Excuse me, is anybody else hearing that reverb? Yes, I am, but I don't, don't know where from. Okay, other? Um, so I'm, I'm not exactly sure where it is. I'm hearing a radio or something on. Is it? I don't hear it now. Now, how about me? No, I'm still, I'm still hearing the reverb, but I don't know exactly where it's coming from. So, uh, we'll try to work through this a little bit.
Try again right quick, is it still doing it?
Um, let me hear, nope.
I also turned the volume down. We, um, we still, oh, but now we don't have mics.
Just speak louder. Turn it up and then I turn the volume off of the computer.
Let's see if that's gotten any better. Yes.
I think so.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
All right, sorry about that. Um, also, I wanna bring up a, a point about fires on the beach. I know, um, I wanna get, I wanna clarify this for everyone. Our signs say, no fires on the beach, we interpret that to mean no ground fires. So you can't build a fire straight onto the sand, you can't dig a hole and, and build a fire now. We allow fires in a metal container at least six inches off the ground. And if, and if you follow that, that, uh, that rule, you're gonna be fine. So just wanna, wanna put that clarification out there. And then, um, probably the last thing that I wanna bring up, and there's been some calls, um, regarding transparency in our finances, um, we are finalizing the check registers, and it will be, we will be publishing it tomorrow, um, through the month of February. We still have a couple of outstanding bills for the month of March that we're gonna finalize, but, um, those will be published to the website tomorrow. Um, that's all I have, and I would stand for questions.
Given the fact that we can't have fires on the beach, should we amend our signage?
Uh, you can see ironically, that's what the signs have always said. Um, but it was brought to our attention because when that one was blown down and, and we just replaced it with the exact verbiage as the other sign down on the fifteen-mile road in it, caught people's attention. Um, you know, I think we are gonna be looking at some additional signage and some change signage when we do the, uh, beach nourishment plan. I, I think it could be a good opportunity, I, I don't know how practical it would be to replace that entire sign for that unchanged, but we can look into it for certain.
The, the sign says no, it does say no campfires, right? And, I mean, in my grossed-out days, a campfire was on the ground, but I think we're splitting hairs.
Yeah, we are a little bit, and so I, that's why I just wanna, you know, that, that is a clarification I wanted to make. I've been in, uh, conversation with Chief Baden and Chief Garvey so that we know, um, how to enforce it and, and, uh, give some clarity to, to our, uh, people who enjoy our beach.
Okay. All right. Uh, we have no other reports from, um, directors at this point. Next is the consent agenda and approval of minutes. Do I, um, have a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from the regular city council meeting on April eleventh, twenty-twenty-four?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in, all in favor of approving the minutes?
Yes.
unanimous, thank you. Okay, comments, reports for members of council. Alderman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've been studying the new policies at Jamaica Beach, we have several of them that have, thanks to Kendall. Um, let me just look at them, there's, uh, the Code of Ethics, there's the employee handbook, there's the, um, the financials, and then the comprehensive, comprehensive financial management policy statements. This, uh, um, thank you so much, Kendall, this is a marvelous way for us to stay and understand how the policies work. And, um, but, and one of the things that, um, the first thing that we went through and got passed was the Code of Ethics. There's something on the back page that I overlooked, I'm not sure if the rest of council did, but there is a Code of Ethics acknowledgement on the back page where, um, we're supposed to print our name, sign it, and put a date, and we're supposed to, uh, give it to Kendall or the city se, interim city secretary. So I have that ready for you, and if I for it to go into my personnel file, please. There's also something that I found, um, 'cause I've been looking through government code section, this is what I do at two A.M. in the morning, um, government code section five-five-two, point zero-two-four, which is a public access option form that, um, um, it has to do with public information app and allows employees, public officials, and former employees and officials to elect whether to keep certain information about them confidential. And so I've elected that I don't want my home address published, although everyone near, drive by my house almost every day, um, but my telephone number, my social security number, an emergency contact, um, and, um, information that reveals whether or, whether or not you have family members. So I just decided to do no for all of that, 'cause if you need me, well, most of you have my number, but somebody outside may want it, and that way you can call City Hall, and then they can call me, and I can call that system pad. So it gives them just a little more, um, privacy. So, um, but I'll leave that, I'll tell Robert with you, so if he could put that in there. And, and I think, um, I'll get another copy if you'd like, and other, other, um, council members and employees can use that if they wish. Um, the, let's see. And a reminder to candidates, you'll need to take the Texas Public Information Training and the open, Texas Open Meeting Training within the first forty-five days of taking office. May I suggest that you also, um, that you can, you can, you can print up the certificate, and, um, it suggested that you also put that into your personnel file. I've always brought it and had it added, um, during the meeting, and keep a copy for yourself. And, um, I talked, Mayor, I talked to Kendall the other day, thank you for that visit, Kendall. And I suggested it would be helpful for our staff to also take that open records and open meeting training, and that way they have a better understanding that when people come in and ask for open records, they can, will understand that it's their right as an American citizen to ask for those. Um, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I don't have anything to report, yeah.
Thank you, Alderman.
As this is my last official meeting, uh, council meeting with, with Jamaica Beach, I would just like to say thank you for the opportunity to sit.
Thank you. Alderman, for this.
I'm just happy to be here, thank you.
Alderman Green?
I have nothing to say.
Okay.
Mayor, could I, could I add to my report?
You sure can.
Um, a couple of things, um, Robert reminded me, um, about early voting, so, like, do you have the, the specifics on that?
Early voting, I think Taz has it. Anyway, early voting is the rest of this week, actually tomorrow, uh, eight to five. Next Monday and Tuesday is seven to seven, and then Saturday, the fourth, is seven to seven.
Yeah, um, but also.
It's election day, I'm gonna vote it today.
The other thing that we need to discuss, oh, sorry, the, the other thing we need to discuss is we are going to need to schedule a special meeting, um, to, um, finalize the election canvas, um, and recommending that be Tuesday, May fourteenth.
Council, this affects, you can look at your calendars.
You can look at your calendars, please, I, um, this is, will be a, a short meeting to, um, to finalize the, the official vote. Um, I'd like to recommend that we do it during business hours, possibly noon, if, uh, if that would work with everybody's schedule, and we get you in here and get you out of here. Um, but we do, we do need to have that, um, if the fourteenth doesn't work, we still have the fifteenth available. Um, unfortunately, the, the county has not done their work until the thirteenth, and the fifteenth is our last day to certify, is what they're telling us, so.
I'm good, I'm clear.
Fourteenth at noon, sorry, is that a Wednesday, Tuesday?
That's the Tuesday, I'm sorry, Tuesday.
Tuesday, Thursday, and fourteenth at noon.
I will try, I, I can guarantee.
Well, the informed.
We, yeah, we, so we would.
Now, on voting, do we need more than a quorum?
Sorry, I'm not getting.
Election guys.
Can you save the votes?
Yeah.
Was it, you do, you do need a quorum?
A quorum, but do we need a super quorum?
That's super major.
We'll verify, we'll verify.
We'll verify that, yeah.
And then make sure.
Yeah, for special meetings, yes. As you're weird, as when I went to the meet, to the calendar for that, yes, you have to have five.
No.
Four, four. Four here, sorry.
I'll be your good old coaster.
Double your salary.
I'll pay for your ballet party.
Okay, well, we're, we're going to tentatively say May fourteenth, twelve noon. Um, I will, um, I will follow up with that, and obviously, we will post that the seventy-two hours after you did it. At that time.
Kendall, may I recommend that we, you touch base with everybody beforehand, I mean, this is a time-sensitive deadline?
Yes, yep.
Even if we have to push it up to get everybody, if necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have two, we have two days to do it in. We can't, we can't do it on the thirteenth, and then we have to have it done by the fifteenth. So we get two days. Yeah, it was, it was a surprise kinda does.
We don't, they, so they, then we're not having the, the, the tallies until the thirteenth for the county. And we don't know what day, at the time of the day, they're gonna do the.
Sign.
So it's scary to do it on the thirteenth, we might not have the official canvas results yet.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, we'll make sure that we get, we double-check with you on, I believe the posted agenda has to go out by, by noon, we're doing it noon on Tuesday. It has to go out noon by Saturday, so we'll verify with all of you on Friday that that's still looking good. And of course, if you learn before then that it's gonna be a problem, let us know as soon as possible. All right? Okay, no old business, on to do business. Um, discussion, consideration, and take action to appoint an alternate to the Board of Adjustments. Uh, I'm recommending Jessica Sark, she was our building coordinator, um, you know, she definitely knows the issues that, that might come up, and we all know how engaged, um, Jessica, both Jessica and her husband Frank are in the community. This is the alternate position, the, the board is actually full at the time, but we'd like to have two alternates. So if anybody knows of anyone, we still need one more, but, um, right now, I'm recommending, uh, Jessica to the board. So do we have a motion to discuss?
I'll make a motion to discuss adding Jessica to the Board of Adjustment.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, any comments from council?
Do it.
Okay, um, do I have a, a motion to approve appointing Ms. Jessica Sark to the Board of Adjustments?
I'll make that motion as stated.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor of appointing Ms. Jessica Sark?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, next new business, um, discussion, consideration, and take action to approve comprehensive, comprehensive financial policy. Do I have a motion to discuss the comprehensive financial policy?
Make a motion to discuss the financial policy.
Second. Okay, um, I think we spoke about this last time, um, any other discussion? Comments, questions, terms?
A comment.
Comment, yes, ma'am?
Kendall, I just appreciate that you go through and highlight the things that might be important and that we might have questions about, you know, to have that yellow highlighting kind of helps to make those stand out. And if I had a question, I, I know that I could ask it, ask you about it, but it's a, a really, um, marvelous, um, document.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do I have any other comments? Do I have a motion to approve the comprehensive financial policy?
Make a motion to approve the comprehensive financial policy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the comprehensive financial policy?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, message, discussion, consideration, and take action to authorize a full-time code enforcement officer position. Do I have a motion to discuss a full-time code enforcement officer position?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, all right, uh, Kendall, you're gonna lead us off, and then we'll open it to, uh, questions from council.
Uh, yeah, um, so, um, in, in your packet, I gave you, uh, a little bit of a background that, uh, of course, as you know, we have been without a code enforcement officer for, well, at least my whole tenure here, um, and, and quite a bit before that, um, we have, we have tried unsuccessfully to hire part-time code enforcement, um, personnel, and, um, you know, the more that I get into, the more experience I have here in the community, the more that I understand that, uh, code enforcement, there's enough work that it, it really needs to be a full-time position. You know, I, I outlined in, in my brief to you, uh, the, the benefits of, of making it a full-time position, you know, as far as compliance, uh, you know, safety, uh, just improved community relations. You know, right now, our, our code enforcement is concerned citizens who happen to, who happen to call City Hall and, and make us aware of situations. Now, of course, uh, we now have Katie, um, and Katie has, she has already taken, uh, an active role in, in some of that, uh, code enforcement, um, and she will, she will help augment that. Um, but, uh, I don't, I don't wanna bog her down with that added responsibility as a full-time position. So, um, you know, I have, uh, outlined in, uh, where the bu, you know, um, what budgets we will be, um, paying for this position with, um, fifty percent out of the general fund and fifty percent are hot taxes. And as I look through the, um, budgeted salaries that we have for the year, um, and extrapolate out, we're still, we have about eighty-five thousand dollars available, um, in our, in our salary budget, which, um, by my calculation, depending on, on where we bring a, a person in, we're gonna be about sixty-five thousand dollars a year with, with salary and benefits. And, uh, um, so we have room in our current budget to add another full-time position. Um, you know, I, I would, I would stand for questions, but my recommendation is that we need to, um, authorize a full-time code enforcement position.
All right, any discussion?
Yeah.
Questions?
I'd like to say I, I see real value in this, in continuity with our citizens and following up and, and resolving these cases, um, and pure, just pure communication with our citizens and clarification of some of the rules. Looks like we're gonna be well-covered in the office, now we'll be well-covered in the field. I, I recommend that we really consider approving this.
What other?
Can you go over the salary again, was it forty plus benefits? What are we hoping, what are we discussing here?
The, the posted range, I think it was eighteen to twenty-five dollars an hour. Um, and, uh, depending on where we would bring that person in, probably in the midpoint of that, depending on what experience, you know, that, that they would have. depending on what experience, you know, that, that they would have. And of course, you'd have payroll taxes and, and the, the benefits for, for health insurance and things like that. So.
Although our salary, the, the salary numbers, when, when we ran them the other day, if we project out to the end of the year, and of course, we're talking only half a year left to pay, we still have roughly, I think, yeah, eighty-five to ninety thousand dollars remaining in just south. The budget and payroll taxes, I mean, the benefits and payroll taxes and health, we're all on a different line item. So there is room in the budget this year. And then also is the comparison that our, the twenty-three dollar range is right in line with our clerks. And that comes out to be about forty, forty-eight thousand dollars a year.
You know, and I.
On, on twenty-three thousand, so we're looking at, you know, a roughly strictly salary. We're not talking, you know, the benefits that go with retirement and health, but that's about forty, forty-eight thousand a year.
And I'm, you know, I.
It's the price range we're probably looking at.
I don't know that I would bring somebody in quite that high unless they can come with.
Lots of experience.
Lots of experience for me. You know, the twenty, I, I still need to be competitive. You know, twenty dollars an hour is forty-one-six.
I hope it's gonna get some attention because we've struggled with filling, filling this position in the past.
Yeah, we know. Yeah, we know that. Anyway, so there, there is room in the budget.
And, and that's part of the reason, you know, we just couldn't get someone to, you know, come down and down for twenty hours a week, you know, and that don't work. No benefits, those types of things. And quite honestly, we have, we have full-time work that, you know, in the last two days alone, we've put, we've red-tagged four separate projects. And, you know, we're, we're missing some. And, and that's just on the building side. We still have property, you know, maintenance codes, you know, tall grass and weeds. We got, we got dilapidated structures. We got other things that we need to be dealing with. And so we need, we need to bring in that full-time, that full-time person. There'll be some redundancy with Katie's assistance and back and forth. So I, I just think it, it's the best move for the city.
Long overdue.
Okay, and do I, any other discussion? Okay, do I have a motion to approve authorizing a full-time code enforcement officer position?
I make a motion to approve full-time code enforcement officer position.
Do I have a second? I'll factor that. All in favor of authorizing a full-time code enforcement officer position?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Onto my mayor's reports. First of all, I too would like to thank Ms. Katie Farmer, who's been managing our short-term rentals in our building department. As Kendall pointed out, she has experience in code enforcement. And let me tell you, she brings a wealth of knowledge from her background. She has already recommended several improvements to our system. She's still assessing the state of our short-term rental management. And I, I did think at this time we'd be able to produce a list of short-term rentals and the primary contact information, but we're still working on that list. So I think Katie's gonna come in and, and really take us to the next level in how we manage our systems. Anyway, then we'll, we'll keep you posted on that. She is recommending a lot of great things. A reminder that citizens are hosting a get-together this Saturday at the park to recognize Mike Gillan, who we know has retired and left us. And then Mark Posey also is going to be recognized there. Both of these fine gentlemen and officers will be missed. I'd also like to reach out a thank you to Ginger Jones and Deborah Ayers. I hope you all have noticed our pretty planner boxes in the front. They're, they're testing some things, but they assure me they have sun-loving plants, and, and they're overseeing those plants' welfare. And so far, they're all looking good. We're hoping for the best. And if you have not voted, please do so. We are looking forward to a new council and hope we can continue on the business of making this city the best place to live on the Texas Gulf Coast. So that's all I have tonight. And we are going to close this portion of the agenda for an executive session.
Six thirty-five.
All right.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.